And welcome to the Orman Beach City Commission Meeting for January 19th, 2021. This is our second regular city commission meeting for the month of January. We are in Commissioner's Chambers and it is seven o'clock. I hope you felt welcomed this evening by Captain Chris Ruse, Deputy Fire Chief Tom Bazanas, and our Leisure Services Director, Robert Carrollon. They served as our greeters tonight. It's a great opportunity for you to meet our great staff. As I call this meeting to order, I want to introduce the folks sitting up in front of you. Our Recording Secretary, Cassidy Ritz. Our City Clerk down in front is Colby Solinto. Our Commissioner from Zone One, Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Our Commissioner from Zone Two, Troy Kent.
Good evening, everybody.
Our Deputy Mayor and Commissioner from Zone Three, Susan Persis.
Hello, everyone.
And our Zone Four Commissioner, Robert Littleton. Also down in front, we have City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and also with us this evening is City Attorney Randy Hayes. At this time, if you would silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation given by Pastor Floyd Narcisse from the historic New Bethel AME Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Giving honor to God, to the mayor, to Councilmember Shelby, Councilmember Kent, Perez, and Littleton, as well as to the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come this day to say thank you for your love and your kindness. But God, as we go on to the business, we ask that you will touch every last one of us to help us to be able to do your work, but do it out of love. Help us, Lord, if we be able to disagree. Help us to be able to disagree out of love and know that we are trying to make Orman Beach the best city, not just in the state of Florida, but the best city in the world. So, Lord, have your way today. Help everyone that's here today. Keep us in your armor of protection and let us know that we can't do nothing without you. So do it right now, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Let the people of God say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For audience remarks this evening, Pastor Narcisse, I'll call on you again to be recognized for audience remarks.
I want to first thank you all for your service. Thank you all for this opportunity. It's been brought to my attention on today while I was in my office, I'm not sure how true it is, but as we all know that we are living in times, in hurting times. The country is hurting. We're all hurting, Republicans, Democrats, independents. But we as Orman Beach need to step out and step out our faith. The reason why I'm speaking this morning, this afternoon, this evening is because it brought to my attention that we had some Orman Beach employees storm the Capitol. I'm not quite sure if it's true or not, but if it is true, I believe that they need to be held accountable. I'm not saying that the protest was, the protest is fine, but if we do have Orman Beach employees that stormed the Capitol, I do believe that they need to be held accountable. That's just my personal opinion. I believe that we need to set aside and show the world that Orman Beach is a beautiful city. It's a beautiful place to live. It's a beautiful place to have your business. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve here in Orman Beach. Thank you all for your services. I continue to pray for you all, no matter white, black, Puerto Rican, whatever it may be. We all, people of God, I love every last one of you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend. The minutes have been sent to the Commission for Review, also posted to the city's website. These are the minutes from the City Commission Meeting of January 5th, 2021. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Just need a motion to approve.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The following item is a community redevelopment item. The City Commission serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city and must review this item and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the City Commission Meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. And at this time, as Chairman of the CRA, I will open the public hearings and ask our assistant to read Resolution Number 2021-29.
A Resolution of the, Resolution Number 2021-29, a resolution of the City Commission, also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, accepting a bid from PNS Paving, Inc. for construction services regarding the Florence Street On-Street Parking Improvements Project under Bid Number 2021-02, authorizing the execution of a contract and payment therefore, rejecting all other bids, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2021-29, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards. I would make a motion for a favorable opinion for this to go to the City Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? This is a recommendation to the City Commission from the CRA Board, recommended for approval on Item 6A. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously. Close the public hearings and reconvene the City Commission Meeting, and we will start now with the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Of course, I'm going to let you comment after we move past, just need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And does any Commission Member wish to comment? I'll start with Deputy Mayor Persis, and then we'll go to Commissioner Kent.
Yes, I just want to recognize some people in the audience that are here for, from the Orman Memorial Art Museum Building. First of all, my dear friend Nancy Lohman is here, and my dear friend Kathy Crati is here, and Susan Richmond, and I forgot your name, Lisa. Lisa is here, and I just want to, first of all, tell you how excited we all are for this building to come to fruition, to see it, see it done in the way that you have dreamed it to be. And thank you all so much for your hard work and for your dedication to the city of Orman Beach. It is the best city, as the Reverend said. It's a wonderful place, and just thank you from the bottom of my heart for making it so much more wonderful. Thank you.
You know, Lowell Lohman's here, too.
Well, Lowell knows I am including him, too.
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does matter, Lowell.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes, I wanted to talk briefly on Item 7B, the Orman Memorial Art Museum. That's in my zone. And Susan Richmond, you called me about five years ago, and you and I sat down with Dr. Tom Brown, and we talked about this idea those many years ago. And I wanted to personally thank you for always keeping me in the loop, always, you know, just chatting with me about, you know, this is in Zone Two, and you know how passionate I am about this city and about those gardens that, as a child, I played in and my children have played in. And my dear friend Andy Romano, when he came back from World War II, helped build with sweat equity. It's going to be a wonderful addition, and the enrichment to Orman Beach will be phenomenal. I'm a really big fan for the educational piece that happens at that museum on the regular basis. So I just, like I said, wanted to take a quick moment to talk about what a great positive addition this is going to be in Orman Beach. Thanks.
Absolutely. Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I just want to also say congratulations. This is a fabulous project and a great example to the community of public-private cooperation and fundraising and so forth. So thank you all for your dedication to it. It's going to be a wonderful addition to the city, a great use of the space, you know, not retaining the wonderful parts of the original building and then expanding up closer to the corner. I think it's really going to be fabulous. So congratulations. Thank you.
Good deal. And under 7C, I wanted to thank the President of the Orman Lakes Homeowners Association for being here, Joe Gallagher. He came just to be safe in case there were any questions, but his group went the right way about getting something done in his community, and I always appreciate seeing that. This is going to be, I think, a win-win for them and for us, and we complied with the statute as required by law. So thank you, Joe, for being here. And then as well, on the Orman Memorial Art Museum, very excited about the plans that are happening there. Wonderful to see the Lohmans tonight. I need one more copy of your book. I've got, I've got three. I need one more, and I'll get with you later on that, but there's so many wonderful life lessons in that. I've given one to each of my daughters, and so now I still need one. But, you know, that is a gem or an oasis in the heart of our city, and if you hadn't had the opportunity to visit that beautiful park and the wonderful facility that's already there, go see it now, and then when these improvements are done, go see how fantastic it's going to be. It's really going to be wonderful for Orman Beach, and generations of kids will continue to grow up knowing that they've had a great experience there, played in that park, and we're just really, really excited. It's, it's a wonderful time to be a part of that. I know this Commission is proud to be engaged with you as partners and see that happen, and so congratulations to you on a successful effort, and thank you for being wonderful community partners. And with that, we will move to public hearings. Item 8A, I will open the public hearings and ask the City Clerk to read ordinance number 2021-02.
Ordinance Number 2021-02, an ordinance amending Paragraph C Official Zoning Map of Section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2 District and General Regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone certain parcels of real property totaling approximately 1,055.8, 80 acres, known as the Plantation Oaks Subdivision, generally located along the east side of Interstate 95, south of Halifax Plantation Subdivision, west of Old Dixie Highway, and north of US Highway 1, from Volusia County Plantation Oaks of Orman Beach Plan Unit Development, RPUD, Volusia County RR Rural Residential, Volusia County R3 Urban Single Family Residential, Volusia County R4 Urban Single Family Residential, and Volusia County R5 Urban Single Family Residential, to City of Orman Beach PRD Plan Residential Development. Authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-02, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on 8A and 8B combined.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, Planning Director. There are three aspects to this request. There is official zoning map amendment and issuance of a development order, basically taking what was in Volusia County and bringing it into the city. And then the last is a discretionary review for the City Commission regarding the deletion of the age restriction in Phase 1 that contains 669 lots. To remove the age restriction, that residence must be 55 ages, 55 age or older. So some of the location map, this is Old Dixie Highway here, this is I-95 here, and then Plantation Oaks bisects the property with the subdivision on either side of Plantation Oaks. The project is part of the National Gardens Development and Regional Impact. This was approved in 1986 by Volusia County. It allowed 3,950 residential units on approximately 2,000 acres. Everything highlighted in this map, this is the original 1986 map, is part of that National Gardens Development and Regional Impact. In 1990, the city annexed Orman Lakes, so this area in blue came into the city. In 2004, portions of the Development and Regional Impact were placed into conservation. The area called Mission Pines, which was directly on the west side of Old Dixie Highway, was put into conservation. Tall Pines, which is north of Addison, was also put into conservation, and portions of Addison Pines, which is directly behind Orman Lakes. So these land areas were all placed in conservation as part of the 2004 Development and Regional Impact amendment. There's two major actions by the Volusia County Council that established a framework for Plantation Oaks. The first occurred in 2002. This was the original approval of the development order. It allowed 1,577 residential units. It had that age restriction that 80% of the residents were to be 55 and older. It established the development standards. Per the Development and Regional Impact, it also required the construction of Plantation Oaks Boulevard by a developer. All the other roadways within the subdivisions are required to be owned and maintained by either HOA or the developer. So the Plantation Oaks is the only public roadway through development. In 2012, the applicant, or the developer at the time, went through an amendment that removed the allowance for only single-family homes. So he added manufactured homes as part, in addition to the single-family homes. So today, they can build either manufactured homes or single-family homes. The project is broken into three phases. The first phase is 669 lots. The second phase, which is already, the infrastructure's in and some of the lots are in, are 427 lots. And then Phase 3, which is on the other side of Plantation Oaks Boulevard, is 481 lots. As part of the overall approval, the Development and Regional Impact approved approximately 40,000 average annual daily trips. And there were criteria in the Development and Regional Impact of the monitoring of the traffic as the project built out. Orman Lakes, their traffic generation was approximately 6,200 trips. When the 2002 Plantation Oaks was approved, it included the residential lots and middle school and a golf course with a restaurant. That equaled approximately 11,500 trips. So the total trip generation was around 18,000, still well less than the 40,000 originally approved, because those lands were pulled out of the Development and Regional Impact. They were put into conservation. So the actions before the Commission tonight, the first two are administrative, they're based on annexation, and they're based on the connection of utilities. So the first one is changing the land area from the Volusia County zoning to the city's planned residential development. The goal of the zoning map amendment is to provide a similar land use and a similar zoning. In this case, we are taking the exact same development orders, all 246 pages, and we are incorporating them as the City of Orman Beaches. So whatever Volusia County allowed, the City of Orman Beach will allow. Past examples of this type of adopting the county development order occurred in Chelsea Place, River Oaks, and Destination Daytona. The second item for you is the actual development order. So those 246 pages will become the city zoning for the development. So the items such as the density, which is 1.5 units per acre, is the same density that existed in Volusia County. The ability to have either manufactured or, or single-family homes continues on. The buffer that is required along Old Dixie Highway remains at 175 feet. After the planning board, the developer and a community organization who are here tonight negotiated that basically this would be placed in a conservation easement, so that is also in the development order that's before you tonight. The third item is a discretionary item, so the Commission can either approve it, approve the conditions, or deny it. The goal, again, is to take the 669 lots and lift the age restriction. In exchange, basically, they would be restricted to only single-family lots, the same as was in 2002 that was then amended in 2012. These are the 669 lots, again, Old Dixie Highway is here, 175-foot buffer. The Volusia County Council discussed today the 76 lots that are between the existing buffer and the F penalty. I believe they were granted a 90-day extension to allow the staff to come back with different alternatives so they can see what options they have for purchasing those lots, and the developer could probably speak better about those actions. So we've heard both arguments for and against. One key fact would be taking this from manufactured homes to single-family. That was the original intent of the 2002 Volusia County approval. It would allow 42% of the development of lots to be single-family fee simple projects. There are no objections from the school board. They reviewed this and provided a determination of school concurrency. The project originally was designed for single-family through the Development and Regional Impact, and it would also provide fee simple lots above the Halifax plantation. At the planning board, there was concerns that the amendment would allow school-aged children, which was not consistent with the original 2002 approval, that basically only 80%, or 20%, 20% should be allowed to be non-age restricted. Again, there was a suggestion that the original development order should be adhered to, and there was a discussion about the increase in traffic. So if you recall the key numbers from the development order of Development and Regional Impact, it was approximately 40,000 average daily trips and about 18,000 for the existing approvals. Once the golf course and once the middle school is taken out of that equation, there's actually about 1,338 less trips with this approval versus the original Plantation Oaks approval, and then about 23,000 less trips than the original Development and Regional Impact, because those lands were placed into conservation. The planning board reviewed these three items. They're recommending approval of each of the items by 6 to 0 vote. Staff is also recommending approval, and the project developer, while not the applicant, is also here to address the City Commission.
Any questions for Stephen at this point? Thank you, Stephen. Nice job summarizing, and we'll go to the applicant, Parker Mitchenberg.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Parker Mitchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. I tell you, you've got a real winner in Stephen Spraker. He did a great job, as usual, kind of explaining what we're up to today. Basically, we're annexed into the city, been before you. I now have a city comp plan designation, and we're here tonight to have you adopt the county zoning and put it into a city PRD. And then the one ask that I have is the 669 lots in Phase 1. We like to lift the age restriction. I actually have a builder partner. We're in, actually, for the engineering on Phase 1A, and if successful at second reading, you're going to see some houses going up in the very near future in Phase 1. Kind of a long day today for me. I was over at county council for about four hours this morning, this afternoon, and they had a discussion about the lots in blue. It was my intent, we had a 200-acre golf course, and in the upper left-hand corner, 22-and-a-half-acre school site. My partner and I, Ronnie Bledsoe, we owned a site on Jimmy Anne next to West Side Elementary in Daytona. So Sarah Lee Morrissey, when she was still with the school board, approached us and said we'd like to expand the West Side Elementary. I think it was make it into a middle school from a grade school. So as part of the DRI, we were obligated to donate that school site. So we basically ended up donating the site on Jimmy Anne, and my office was hired by the architect, and we actually designed the West Side Elementary improvements. They're just about done. So we're here tonight with one ask, and that's to lift the age restriction for the 669 lots. Orman Beach, in general, Halifax Plantation to the north of this, that I'm very proud of designing all the roads. My company designed all the roads in Halifax. We also did Fairchild Oaks, Sugar Mill Plantation, Wexford Plantation that was recently renamed to Wexford Reserve. So I have kind of 38 years in business and have designed most of the subdivisions. In addition to that, to the south of this is Orman Lakes, and we also designed Orman Lakes. So I've got a lifetime of work invested in this area. So with the elimination of the golf course and the picking up of the 22-and-a-half acres for the school site, I am in the future going to come back to the City Commission and look for some entitlements for the school site and some lots for the 200-acre golf course that we've now eliminated. So I was approached about three months ago to ask if I was a willing seller for the 76 lots that are in blue. And basically, at that point, I was already into a letter of intent with a home builder. So I'd indicated, you know, I'm a willing seller, but I can't keep this off the market for years, and I indicated, you know, I need to know something in 90 days. So today is about the 90th day, and went to county council, had a couple hours of discussion, and it was Florida Forever and the Echo money that 75% of the voters voted for. The council wanted to make sure that we're, that they didn't circumvent the selection process with those Echo grants and Florida Forever. So after a lot of discussion, they said they needed more time, so I walked up to the podium and asked the chair how much time. So they looked at each other and said 90 days, and I said, you got it. So that's sort of the summary of what went on today, is I think there is an interest with the community in purchasing those lots, perhaps. There's been one appraisal done. I wasn't given the number by Cooksey, and I think they're going to order another appraisal. But I said under the condition that those 76 lots would be relocated, so I'm not reducing the 669 by those 76. I'm going to move those into the golf course corridors, basically. And anyway, citing time, I'm a long haul. I've owned the property with my partner for, I think, 19 years. We paid money for it back then, survived the recession, have paid taxes on it for 19 years. Don't hold me exactly to the number, but we spent $8 million building the road from US 1 to Old Dixie. No impact fee credits, all cash. So we're excited about building some houses, and I'll answer any questions I can.
Thank you, Parker. Any questions for Mr. Mitchenberg? We may recall you if we have anything after we.
Yeah, I'd like to have the opportunity to speak after everybody else speaks, perhaps.
Sure. First up, under Audience Comments, is Philip Widener.
Hi, my name is Philip Widener. I live on 831 O'Leander in Holly Hill. I grew up here. We moved here in 1967, played baseball out here where the Orman Beach Police Department sits. My mom was a librarian here at Orman. Anyway, kind of just want to paint a picture here of what I feel is going on with this area. And as I was driving here tonight, I was driving down Riverside and Beach Street, and I'm looking at the beautiful Halifax River with the scenery. And I'm not here about land conservation, I'm here about scenic preservation, and I think that's something that is very important to the Save the Loop movement. So with that picture in mind of the Halifax River, what would happen if something all of a sudden was being built to obstruct that beautiful view of our Halifax River? Well, that's what I think's going on out here on Old Dixie Highway. When you take that turn over to Moca Bridge, all of a sudden, you're seeing these subdivision entranceways that are coming up every mile or so. So I think what's happening is, is our scenic preservation is not being respected with the Old Dixie Highway, that west corridor. So if you, for one example, the Taconic Parkway in New York, that goes from New York City to Albany, is a 100-mile stretch that was developed by Theodore Roosevelt. And when you drive that Parkway, you do not see gas stations, you do not see hotels, you do not see any billboards, any signage. That's 100-mile stretch. My heart really wants to see the scenic preservation taking place on Old Dixie Highway, really taking a good look and trying to preserve that as much as we can. I don't think there's any way that these ordinances are going to get changed with the housing. I'm not here to discuss that, but I'm here for future to look at, and I emailed you all tonight, the overlays zoning. This is Section D, Part 2, Page 20, 21 on the email I sent you. It basically gives the right to do overlay zoning to protect scenic loops, scenic highways. So if you go to that page, look at that, and just think about what's happening to the scenic preservation. I know I only have 27 seconds, so what's happening on the Plantation Oaks Boulevard entering into Old Dixie Highway is an obstruction to the scenery. You do not get that privilege of driving down Old Dixie Highway and seeing what I saw when I was four years old, a when I was four years old, a natural scenic road. You see subdivisions. I think the way to prevent traffic and to prevent any future obstruction to that scenery is don't allow roads into Old Dixie Highway. The developer did say in a comment that buses could use the US One corridor, so think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Widener.
Maybe make the entranceway-
Next up is Connie Colby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Connie Colby. I live at one oh eight Roble Lane in Ormond Beach. I'm only speaking about the age restriction at this time. From two thousand and two until now, Plantation Oaks has only been advertised as a fifty-five and older community. The people that live there right now were sold that as their retirement home, and it seems like that would be breaking a promise that was made to them. Housing at that time doesn't really matter to me, one way or the other, what they do. What bothers me is that they want to put children in there now, and these people did not anticipate that they would have children jumping over them in a swimming pool. Since there, they took that school away, it seems kind of questionable as to why they would want to now put families in there with school buses and people running back and forth with their children, going to all kinds of activities, and teenagers driving around. I've lived in both Aberdeen and the Falls, and that was not what we were looking forward to. There's some misconceptions about that, the fifty-five and older community, that they don't pay taxes. Aberdeen last year paid, just for school taxes, over a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The Falls paid over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in just school taxes, and Bear Creek paid over ninety-one thousand, ninety-one hundred thousand dollars in school taxes. They didn't add any children to the community schools at all. We've been told that they will require extra city services, the roads in gated communities that are not patrolled by the police. They do come if there's crime. There's not really a lot of crime to worry about. Traffic, you're going to have more traffic. I don't care what those say. You have people running back and forth with their kids to dance in classes and football practice and in and out for their jobs every day, and all the additional trips that families make. In fifty-five and older community, you have two people at the most living in a house. A lot of them are just single people living there. I don't know, I have not seen a traffic impact analysis that encompassed the whole community, and I think there was one that was required at one time. Maybe there's somebody that could have more information on that.
Thank you, Connie. Next is Suzanne Schreiber.
Suzanne Schreiber, Ormond Beach. The focus of us being here tonight is concerning the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail, an American Byway. There are a hundred and fifty designated American Byways in the United States. We're incredibly fortunate to have one here in our city and county. I'm correcting public record stated by the mayor that the price is not eleven to sixteen million on the seventy-six lots and never was. The price is now public for one point three eight million for the seventy-six lots at approximately a hundred and thirty-six acres for land conservation. In addition, the land is covered with forest and intact, and the trees are not burned down. Today, the county council voted, as Mr. Mitchenberg said, six oh in favor of asking the staff to pursue the property with due diligence and come back with options for purchase, including two appraisals to be completed. Mr. Mitchenberg has been very cooperative, and we want to thank him. On December tenth, staff asked us if we would like a letter of support sent to the county, and we said yes. So far, the commission has expressed opposition to the land conservation, deeming it not necessary. Moving forward, it would benefit all of the city of Ormond Beach if we would, if the city would cooperate with the county and support the project. After all, this land is in our backyard. The citizens spoke loudly with sixty-four thousand signatures on the petition for land conservation specifically on the loop. As far as a conservation board for other land, we never asked for that. I do want to express that there are funds available for land purchases and projects through grants such as FDEP, Echo Forever, and others. Funds come and go. When listening to the commission, it seems forgotten that Volusia Forever passed with seventy-five percent approval and Echo with seventy-three percent approval. There is an enormous difference in the half-cent sales tax vote that was declined by voters in conservation, recreation, historical, archaeological, and cultural tax, which they passed with high numbers. It's up to the citizens, of course, concerning a land trust relating to tax, but personally, I don't see it necessary if staff pursued grants and funds in other ways. This is just my opinion. By all means, please ask the public, because the public voices matter, as they did with this purchase on the loop. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Next is Natalie Pilipsak.
My name is Natalie Pilipsak. I live at thirty-eight seventy-six Dorsey Ave. When I spoke at the county council meeting two weeks ago, my Save the Loop petition was at sixty-two thousand five hundred and eighty signatures. Today, it is at sixty-three thousand, not seven hundred and ninety-five signatures. In a little under two weeks, nearly a thousand more people signed their name to Save the Loop. I would also like to mention that these sixty thousand people have donated over twelve thousand dollars to the petition. Unfortunately, due to change to org's policies, I did not receive any of that money to put towards this movement, but it just goes to show how much people have given to support this cause. There are also over fifteen hundred comments on the petition. I would like to list a few of my favorites. Sally Brinkley says the loop is a treasure that cannot be recreated once it is gone. James Ruffner comments, what is Ormond without the scenes and peacefulness of the loop? Maria Soto, we are doing ourselves and future humanity the disservice of not enjoying the gifts of nature. Rebecca Faught, this is the beauty that makes Ormond. And they are right. Earlier today, the Volusia County Council agreed to pursue grant applications and expressed an interest in land conservation on the loop. Please address this and write a letter in support of the county council's decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and next is Tim Grigsby.
My name is Tim Grigsby, twelve oh six Overbrook Drive, Ormond Beach, Florida. I'm here to speak about the ordinance authorizing the development known as the Plantation Oaks to delete the age restriction that limits residents to fifty-five years of age or older and require homes to be stick-built. First, I wish to thank Mr. Mitchenberg for being here tonight. I know he had a long day, having listened to him sit through agenda item twelve B, which I think discussions were over three hours, so he's had a very long day. Also, I want to thank him for giving the county council ninety additional days to pursue funding for purchasing seventy-six lots of Plantation Oaks, which are adjacent to Old Dixie Highway. In my opinion, that stick-built homes with no age restrictions will be a better fit for this area of Ormond Beach at this time. In addition, our tax base would be increased with stick-built homes rather than manufactured homes, helping to offset upkeep and maintenance costs for streets and infrastructure in the future. I do not agree that younger families cause more traffic than people fifty-five and older. I live in a mixed-aged neighborhood, and my observations show that fifty-five and older people are very young, travel very active, more so than a lot of families that have to work and don't have the time for recreation if you're heading out all day long. So I recommend to city commission approve the ordinance, but approve with a condition. This is key here, is the commission could approve with the condition that the entrance onto Old Dixie be closed off to vehicular traffic, to all but emergency vehicles and emergency evacuation events. This would greatly reduce the traffic onto Old Dixie and protect the corridor for future generations to enjoy. While listening to the county council meeting today, one of the council members asked this question, where is Ormond Beach on this issue, and why have they not helped with this effort? I think that's a very good and fair question. The developer has done his part by offering to sell. Citizens have done their part by voting to renew Volusia Forever and Echo, and by keeping this issue front and center, but where is the city of Ormond Beach? I please ask that you will step up to the plate and help out with this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Arnoff.
I'm Sally Arnoff, and I live in Sugar Mill Plantation in Flagler Beach, and I want to thank Mr. Mitchenberg, County Commission, for hearing this tonight. When, this was first on the agenda way back, several months ago, and then delayed, I wrote to each one of you, offering a suggestion. My concern is not having the lots convert to fifty-five and under in stick-built, site-built homes. My concern is the additional traffic that is going to be dumped onto Old Dixie Highway. The lots, this phase, six hundred and sixty-nine, are on the north end, adjacent to Halifax, and the closest entrance, it's right at Old Dixie Highway entrance. I don't know whether you're aware, but Halifax Plantation is opening up additional phases. They're opening up an additional entrance, which is just north of the intersection with Plantation Oaks. I don't know if you can put the map back on, but where Plantation Oaks dead-ends into Old Dixie, that is a double-blind curve, and adding the additional traffic is going to be dangerous. I agree with the other gentlemen, and in my email to you, I suggested that the north end of Plantation Oaks be closed to general traffic and open only for emergency traffic, and push the rest of it down to US One, which has been recently, and the barrels are still up, enhanced, and it is a traffic light, and it's just east of the interstate. My other suggestion was Ross Common Road, which is the entrance road for the small Publix on Old Dixie at the interstate. It is only a block long, and it dead-ends, but it is a four-lane divided highway that could be extended south to give an access into Plantation Oaks. This other alternative that I suggested was to use what is now a dirt road called Utility Drive, and that goes down to the utility area that serves that district, and have that paved to be an access going to the north. All of that will end up on Old Dixie at the interstate, but it will alleviate the Loop Road. And just in my last couple of seconds, I wanted to share with you that the Loop Road is not just scenic here, it is known around the country. I graduated from a very small rural community in Ohio, and when I bought my home in Sugar Mill, a very good friend of mine from Ohio who still lives there knew exactly where I lived because he led the rides along the-
Thank you, Ms. Arnoff. Now, we're going to move to Mr. Mitchenberg for-
Thank you.
Just a little bit of rebuttal, and then we'll see if there's a motion in a second.
First off, thanks to the community and the folks that came and spoke. I designed all the roads in Halifax Plantation, and when I hear comments about extending the Ross Common Road, and it's a four-lane road, physically, there's no way to do that. It was designed, I did the plans for it, as a four-lane road because there is a commercial undeveloped parcel that's behind Publix that someday will be developed as commercial. I appreciate what was said about closing off the connection to Old Dixie Highway with Plantation Oaks Boulevard, but now that the road is open, there's a lot of people southbound that instead of going to Pine Tree and running through Pine Run, a residential subdivision, two-lane, they're able to get to US One and I ninety-five. So I think the traffic flow from the folks, the South end of Halifax, I also appreciate that she lives in Sugar Mill, the one lady that spoke. I designed that subdivision, and I'm very proud of that as well. And I always kind of am interested when people that move down here, I've lived here my whole life, sixty-five years, they move into Sugar Mill, but they forget that they brought their trips onto the loop that I grew up with. So just want to make that point, and again, I'll answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mitchenberg at this time? Commissioner Kent.
Hey, Parker.
Hey.
The second speaker brought up a pretty interesting point. She talked about, you know, she bought into an age-restricted community. How many homes are there right now with people living in them, in that section with the age-restricted community?
Yeah, I just, we just got started, and currently, I have-
I was there for the grand opening.
Yes, thank you for that. Currently, I think we have thirty-four homes that are occupied, so about sixty, some folks live there, and I'm one-on-one with all of them. I have meetings with them. They're aware of kind of what we're doing here, and if you look at the rendering that's up on the screen, each of these three phases are gated. The main road is the, was a county street, now a city street. So you don't have with Phase Two, people living with children in that community. If you look at the rendering, you see the big lake that separates Phase One from Phase Two. So this is very much like, you know, Crane Lakes was mentioned. You ride down Dunlaughton, you pass Crane Lakes. Well, Crane Lakes is next to a stick-built, non-age-restricted, single-family subdivision. They don't share the amenities, so the three-and-a-half-million-dollar clubhouse that we built is only for the four hundred and twenty-seven lots that are in Phase Two, so there's really no co-mingling. And this is Plantation Oaks Boulevard. It's not like Dunlaughton, but there is segregation between these phases where they don't have any shared amenities, and the folks are pretty happy there.
Right. Thank you for that explanation. You know, personally, I like stick-built better than the age-restricted, but I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, I never, ever liked to have the rug pulled out from under me. I was, it's no, it's no surprise, I'm in public education, and I knew what it was getting into it, okay? I knew I didn't pay into my pension, and when the state did that to me, and everybody else in the state, that's an educator, and made them start paying three percent of their salary, that didn't feel nice. That should have been implemented on everyone new coming in, sort of like our former commission did when we made, implemented changes for our pension system. We did it to new employees, the ones that were grandfathered in were grandfathered in. So I mention that because I'm not cra, like, the second woman that spoke, and I apologize I didn't write her name down, but I feel that pain. That would bother me if I purchased going in knowing something, and now the rules have changed. So I just share that with you and the public here and anybody listening online. That gives me a little bit of heartburn, and it bothers me a little bit. On the other side, I like the stick homes much better. I think it's better for the community, and I agree with, a lot with what Mr. Grigsby said whenever he spoke. The other thing is, is, you know, this is all hot off the press. I mean, I work for a living, so I'm at work all day. I wasn't able to go to the county council meeting, so I was getting out, and I heard on the radio, and, you know, a little bit of hubbub walking in here about, you know, ninety days, and they're going to look at that, but I didn't know that you were planning on still keeping those lots. And I'll tell you, that gave me a little heartburn at first. I thought, well, gosh, this is a great, great deal for Parker Mitchenberg and his partners, you know, someone might buy this property, but you still get to keep those lots. And then, as I was sitting here thinking that, I thought, well, why should you and your partners be penalized? Why should that happen? So, you know, my mind- So, you know, my mind's kind of bounced around on that a little bit. But Stephen, can you show me where, with the little pointer, where's the school site? Where those, where those homes will go? So they'll get moved over to Phase Two over there?
No, so the 76 lots would be in this general phase. So this plan shows, like, the golf course is made into bigger lakes. So they have land area that, what used to be a 200-acre golf course. So some of that land would be redesigned.
Right.
So basically, the 76 lots would stay in Phase One.
Right, and I guess I shouldn't ask you, I should maybe ask Joyce because, like, to me, that's like hot-off-the-press news, you know. I'm still going to keep those lots. Is staff recommendation okay with that? Did staff know that?
We are aware of that, yes. But again, we're not involved in the selling of those lots.
No, no, I know that, but I'm talking about him keeping the number of lots. So they're going to sell, but he clearly said tonight, I'm still going to put those lots in Phase One. Like, that's happening.
Well, and I think Stephen can speak to this, but it does not increase his overall density of 1,005,007.
Right, 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 no. I know, I know that it doesn't, but it does put more homes in a space where there weren't going to be that, that many homes. Thinking about the density part of it right there. But I'm, I'm actually, after sitting here and talking it through and listening, first time I heard it, I'm actually think I'm okay with that, with that as well. I just wanted to express a little bit of my concern with that.
Troy, if I could comment before you make the next point. There's a misconception. Currently, we have zoning that allows stick-built homes in this entire development. So we're not going from manufactured homes to stick-built. I think I heard you say, you know, you like the stick-built part of it. Plus, currently, 80% has to be age-restricted, so 20% can be non-age-restricted. So that might help a little bit with that point. And I plan on, in the future, with the school site, where I have the 22 acres, I'm probably going to come back in the future. We're no longer building a school there, so I'm thinking about either townhouses or something, which will require rezoning requests. So...
Right.
What we're basically doing with putting the lot, the 76 lots into public ownership, is I'm rearranging my open space and taking some of the golf course property to put the homes in there. So I just wanted to make that point.
And my last, my last comment is, because I, if I didn't say it publicly, I think I did. I was against using Ormond Beach taxpayer money to purchase those lots. I'm still against using Ormond Beach taxpayer dollars to do that. However, at our political debate, I did say I'm for Echo and Volusia Forever. And with the county using grant money and possibly county tax dollars, I'm fine with them spending that money on those lots. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Parker? Commissioner Selby.
Parker, I just have one question. Phase Three, you're only asking for the age restriction to be lifted on Phase Two, right?
On Phase One.
I'm sorry, Phase One, yeah, I think of...
And I do have, I do have an interest with Phase Three, a letter of intent. And the folks are going to, in order to lift the age restriction in Phase Three, will have to go through this process again, so I'm not asking for that tonight. But I want to start with, we had to ask back in 2002 for the age restriction. It wasn't like the county said, you're going to be age-restricted. Back then, it was not normal or common to ask for an age restriction. So my partner Ronnie and I wanted to do an age-restricted community. We had already developed Plantation Oaks of Flagler up the road, 377 manufactured homes on leased lots. And this was envisioned to be Plantation Oaks of Ormond, another one of those type communities. And it was at our last public hearing at county council where we got a call the day before the hearing. One of our folks, it was a yay vote, and said, I can't support manufactured homes. This is 2002. So we agreed to not do those. And funny story, he didn't vote for it, even though we changed the housing type. So that was a lesson learned. But we did have the chair at the time switch her vote and supported it. So we had to ask for the age restriction. It wasn't like that was put on us at the time. You weren't able to do age-restricted communities without asking. And the main part of it was Aberdeen had just had a lawsuit, and it was determined that if you have 55-plus, you don't pay school impact fees. In our zoning back in 2002, we agreed with the chair, Bruno. At the time, the impact fee for housing was $1,100 a lot. We agreed to pay the school impact fees, even though we were 55-plus. So some of these details kind of get lost in the shuffle.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Parker.
All right, at this point, just need a motion and a second for discussion.
I'll move ordinance number 2021-02.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Commissioner Selby, I'll let you go first since you made the motion.
So I'd like to just respond to, just from what I know about the project, respond to some of the public comments. The first one is relative to the entrance on Old Dixie Highway. That was, that's part of the original plan that was approved back in 2002. So the developer had to build it. But, but more important than that, and this happened, I'll say, almost by accident, but I spent about an hour out on Plantation Oaks Boulevard, right at that entrance, just before Old Dixie Highway. So I was facing east, you know, on the end of Plantation Oaks Boulevard. And it happened to be, I don't know, around 4:00, 5:00, 5:30 in the afternoon. And I couldn't believe how many cars came up Plantation Oaks Boulevard and made a left onto Old Dixie Highway. And I can only imagine that the vast majority of those people live in Halifax Plantation, or they live further up into Flagler County, over on a Walt, you know, going west on Walter Boardman or whatever. And they may have gotten off the interstate at, at 40 or, et cetera. So what I'm, here's what I'm suggesting to you is that a lot of people very quickly figured out, this was a great shortcut to where they wanted to go. So if you live north of Plantation Oaks, and you're heading south, and you want to get on the interstate, or you just want to get on US One, the quickest way to get on US One is to cut through this $8 million road that they built for free. Okay? And normally, developers, when they spend that much money on a road, they qualify for road impact fees, which means that the money that they spent to build the, well, at least on the land, I may be misstating this, but they get a credit for the land and maybe some of the improvements that they build against future impact fees that they'll have to pay on every house that they sell. Okay? So, and they didn't ask for any of that. So that's a, that's a huge thing just to think about. It's another way to look at the benefit of that entrance. While I'm on that, you know, I live not too far from there. I live, you know, right off the loop. And one day, just less than two years ago, I think, about a year and a half ago, I drive by, drive up north past Plantation Oaks, and oh my gosh, I see this brand-new entrance to Halifax Plantation, which frankly appears to me to be bigger than the Plantation Oaks entrance. And I'm like, whoa, what's that all about? So I turn around, I drive in there, and I see all this land that's being cleared. I didn't hear a peep out of anybody at this commission chambers or at the county council about this new entrance to Halifax Plantation. Now, I'm not begrudging them for having it, but I, I kind of don't, it doesn't add up to me. I don't, I don't get why there's this selective indignation about their entrance, but not a peep about the Halifax Plantation entrance. Couple of other comments that were said. Current residents were misrepresented because they were represented, it was represented to them. It was a 55 and over community. What Mr. Mitchenberg said really needs to be understood. Phase Two is really its own separate town, almost. I mean, it is, it is a manufactured home community. It's a land-leased community. Nobody in there, all 427 lots. They're all, it's a land-leased community, much like Aberdeen, or the Falls, or Bear Creek. Those people, and they're, and as Mr. Mitchenberg said, they're, it's gated. It's totally enclosed. They have all their own amenities. So they're not impacted whatsoever by the other two phases of this, of Plantation Oaks. The, there was another comment about the additional traffic from all ages. And what we saw from the planning director was that even if there is some additional traffic from all ages versus 55 and over, it's still well below what was originally approved in the, in the DRI and in the original development order. Did I say that properly, Stephen? Right, okay. And, you know, and while I'm on Halifax Plantation, and I'm, and this is not to be critical of Halifax Plantation at all. I don't mean to do that one bit. But they indeed, in fact, on today's county council agenda, I didn't drill down on it, but there were two or three items relative to changes in their zoning or their development order, I don't know what it was, about. They have huge sections of Halifax Plantation that will be coming online here in the very near future. So, you know, my focus on this whole thing is, is really, when we talk about saving the loop and preserving the view, one gentleman spoke about the view. Nobody is doing more to preserve the view than Plantation Oaks. They have a 175-foot buffer. Halifax Plantation has a 50-foot buffer. Their buffer is nearly four times, actually, I guess it's three and a half times? Yeah. Three and a half times the depth. So if anybody's preserving view, they are. And, and I genuinely appreciate that because that's huge. And they also have a lot less frontage on Old Dixie Highway compared to Halifax Plantation. Their frontage on Old Dixie Highway is that black line, the portion of the black line that basically is almost parallel to the, yeah, there you go. That's all of their frontage. That purple line over to the left, it does not front on Old Dixie Highway. Okay? So they have a lot less frontage, and all of it is in that 175-foot buffer. That's a, that's, that's it, Ms. Burner, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, and Commissioner Littleton.
I'll just say, this is the type of development I'd like to see in Ormond Beach. I mean, we have a 175-foot buffer right now, and we have a density of 1.5 units per acre. I mean, that's as low as it can go, basically. So in my opinion, this is the type of thing you want to see in Ormond Beach. I think the age restriction, though some genuine points got brought up, ultimately, because it's, Phase One is just now beginning, it's not too much of a problem to remove the age restriction. And really, if you want, if you want to keep our children here in Ormond Beach growing and raising families, they have to be able to buy homes. And I think Plantation Oaks would be the great place for them to do it. So I'm in favor of both amendments or both ordinances.
Thank you, Commissioner Littleton. Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yes, I concur basically with what everybody said up here. I think Parker has worked hard to make Ormond Beach a better place. You've lived here all your life, you want it to be beautiful. I've lived here all my life. I, I know what the loop looked like when I drove through it speeding when I wasn't supposed to, when I was 15 or 16 years old. And it still looks beautiful, and I think, I think it will always look beautiful because we will make sure that it does.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Mr. Widener's comments about the scenic overlay, I did get that email. We were in the middle of a workshop, budget workshop, so I haven't had a chance to look at that, but I appreciate receiving that information. Ms. Colby, I thought your question was great. Commissioner Kent brought that up about the age restriction. That was a good question, and I thought Parker addressed that. I appreciate that. Ms. Schreiber and Ms. Pilozak have worked very hard, and I think they've been frustrated with how government works, which that's not uncommon for anybody that, that deals with government. But the letter of support to the county council is something maybe we can agenda for a future agenda. It's not really part of this discussion, but I think now that we know where the county's headed with that, it would be appropriate for us to support. I kind of agree with Commissioner Kent, not using Ormond Beach dollars, but Echo or other grant funds, I think, would be appropriate. And then Mr. Grigsby and Ms. Aronoff talked about closing Old Dixie, and Parker, I thought you addressed that as well. Gosh, if we, it's so tough because we get so many recommendations, suggestions of how to do things. You know, just on the, on the loop alone, some people think it should just be 25 miles an hour on the entire loop. Other people think there should be toll roads where the loop begins and where it start, where it starts and where it stops. Some people think we should close the Old Dixie entrance. Other people think, do the pine, is it Pine Tree? That's the little road there. They say, close that at the back entrance to Ormond Lakes, and then vacate that entire road all the way up to Old Dixie. And environmentally, and from a flood perspective, that would make more sense to save as many animals as possible and to create as huge of a buffer as possible. But your Ormond Lakes residents would go crazy probably if you did that. I mean, so you get a lot, a lot of suggestions from people who aren't transportation engineers, haven't been involved with the project for years. It just makes it tough for us to try to sort through them all. But I would, I wanted to point out a couple of letters we received. Because of the pandemic, we are accepting public comment via email. One was from the DeFrancos from Daytona Beach Shores, and they just talk about how beautiful the loop is and anything we can do to preserve a wide natural native buffer. The other one was from Joe Janes, who is chairman of the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail. And Ormond Beach is lucky, we have two scenic trails in our community. One is the Black Bear, Florida's Black Bear Byway, which runs out State Road 40, and the other is the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail. So we're blessed in that regard. But he said, just for the record, the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail Corridor Management Entity, the official-designated Florida Scenic Highway and National Scenic Byway Organization, is in full support of the amendments being considered by the Ormond Commission regarding Plantation Oaks. And so that's the gist of, of his comments. So that concludes the discussion, unless there's anything else from any commissioner. I'll ask Colby to please call the vote on 8B.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we move to 8B.
Ordinance number 2021-03, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a 1,577 residential unit planned residential development known as Plantation Oaks. Based upon annexation and incorporating the Volusia County Development Orders previously approved, authorizing an amendment to allow Phase One, 669 lots of the Plantation Oaks subdivision to delete the age restriction that limits residents to 55 years of age and over, and requiring that all homes constructed within Phase One shall only be site-built, single-family, standard dwellings on fee-simple lots with no manufactured or mobile homes allowed, subject to Volusia County School concurrence, generally located along the east side of Interstate 95, south of Halifax Plantation subdivision, west of Old Dixie Highway, and north of US Highway One, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-03, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Need a motion and a second for discussion.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-03.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on these items? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we'll move to 8C.
Ordinance number 2021-04, an ordinance amending Chapter Two District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by updating Article Seven, North US Highway One, Interlocal Planning and Municipal Service Area, Division Two, Itinerant Merchant Regulations for Recognized Special Events and Outdoor Entertainment Activity, Temporary Campsites, Section 2-84 Municipal Service Area and Joint Planning Area. Purpose. Section 2-85 Legislative Findings. Section 2-86 Definitions. Section 2-87 High Impact Uses on Land. Classification and Category of Use. Rationale. Section 2-88 Amortization Schedule for Vacant or Unimproved Land Category. And Section 2-90 Temporary Campsites. Repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-04, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on 8C.
Again, Stephen Spraker, planning director. So...
Again, Stephen Spraker, planning director. So these portions of the land development code contain the implementation of interlocal service boundary agreements as it relates to special events. When this, when these sections were created, it allowed properties that had vacant lands, campsites that had had special events in the past, it allowed a five-year amortization date. That date expired on August 28, 2019. So basically, the purpose of this code is, or this amendment, is to recognize that basically you can't have special events on vacant land. And the ones who made improvements, got back, got onto the list that allows it, the ones that didn't, for example, Boot Hill, didn't, they were able to go through a special exception process in order to allow their events, but they had to make building improvements and become a business. So the temporary campsite is no longer allowed use. So this amendment basically takes out the amortization schedule, and now from here forward, anybody who wants to do special events has to have a permanent business and would have to go through a special exception.
Any questions for Stephen on this one?
Move approval.
Second to motion.
Any further discussion? I think we've all been dealing with this long enough to have a good idea how it all works. So with that, Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2021-05, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Ormond Beach. By amending the future land use map to change the designation of a portion of one parcel of real property totaling .32 plus or minus acres located at 2341 West Granada Boulevard, Volusia County Property Appraiser parcel number 4127-00-00-0024, from Volusia County Rural R to Ormond Beach General Commercial, G C, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-05, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby, and I'll ask planning director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item as well.
This property is partially within the city of Ormond Beach and partially within unincorporated Volusia County. This is the whole triangle portion of the property. There is a telecommunications tower approved by Volusia County located on the majority of the site. The property is going through an inheritance. They were checking the zoning. This portion of the property was annexed into the city of Ormond Beach, I believe in the 60s. It was not assigned a city zoning. They are seeking to get a city land use and zoning as part of this process. Staff looked at the comparable land uses. General Commercial is located next door with a B2 zoning district. Our goal is to provide a similar land use. The B2 is unique in that it does not allow residential uses, and that it doesn't allow intensive commercial. So it wouldn't allow convenience store, wouldn't allow drive-through restaurant. It only allows neighborhood commercial. So that is the reason why we are suggesting the general commercial. Planning Board recommended approval with a 7 to 0 vote. Staff is also recommending approval. If approved, it would go on to the Volusia County Growth Management Commission for their review.
Any questions for Stephen? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, Stephen, yeah, that's the map. What is the white stripe, the vertical white stripe? What is that? What does that indicate?
That is areas that were annexed into the city. So none of these, these properties have city land use and zoning. They're maintaining their county land use and zoning.
Okay. And that kind of leads to my question, which I'll jump in. So if we did nothing, nothing?
They maintain their county land use, but it is in the city, and we do have obligations to provide land use and zoning to properties within the city of Ormond Beach.
Understood.
We're going to look at the rest of these, but right now, these are all single-family residential, so basically they're maintaining their county land use.
This has been in since 1962, did I read?
Correct. I think this was a strip of land designed to prevent annexation from the city of Ormond Beach.
So it's not something we have to do immediately necessarily?
No, we will contact these property owners and see where they're at and where to go with it.
I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of what's behind it. The narrative of a inheritance isn't compelling to me, but maybe that's the case. But, I mean, what can they do with this once we make it general commercial?
Based on the size of the scope, you really need the rest of the parcel. One option is they could combine it with this parcel. This parcel, if you look at the open space conservation, there are wetlands within here, so the, as a standalone parcel, it's very limited. I wouldn't expect that, once you take the green belt buffer, all the setbacks and the parkings, that you would be able to put anything. If the telecommunications tower ever redeveloped, then you may have some, some options there. Again, I don't believe the current property owners are looking for development. They want to have a city land use and zoning.
All right. And final question, what, you know, if they were able to sell it to the red parcel, G C people, and then buy the parcel north of them, and put that all together, what type of thing could go there?
It would be the B2 zoning district, which is a neighborhood commercial. So, you know, think of a small convenience store with no gas, kind of a neighborhood commercial, or more likely, they'd probably be in for a planned development before the planning board and city commission for whatever creative idea that they come up with.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other questions for Stephen?
Yeah, just the, Stephen, the, the small parcel that's immediately north of the subject, is that owned by the, that, yeah, that piece right there, between Old Tamoca?
Right.
That must be owned by the, the industrial, the foam?
I believe it's owned by Imperial Foam.
Yeah, okay. And then that's the Little Tamoca Yacht Club, right, on the, on the left, yeah?
So these are in, in unincorporated Volusia County.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Just need a motion and a second. Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8E.
Ordinance number 2021-06, an ordinance adopting certain updated schedules to the capital improvements element of the city of Ormond Beach Comprehensive Plan. Providing when such updates shall take effect, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-06, read by title only.
And we go to Stephen again.
So this amendment seeks to amend the capital improvement schedule. It doesn't actually have any text amendments to goal, policy, and objectives. This is a state law requirement, basically to implement what you've done in your capital improvement plan. It also pulls from, like, the River City Transportation, also pulls from the schools, their capital budget. Also in this item, we included a concurrency review, so we provided, like, some updates on residential development over time and commercial development. So this is something we do annually, and if there are any questions, we'd be more happy to answer.
Any questions for Stephen? Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval of ordinance number 2021-06.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8F.
Resolution number 2021-40, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the Kingsview Farm LLC located at 2415 Durant Lane to allow a riding stable, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-40, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Planning director, Stephen Spraker.
This is a special exception at 2415 Durant Lane. The property is shown in this aerial. The special exception is allowed use within the zoning district, but it requires, the public hearing review requires planning board and city commission action. The prop, this is an aerial showing basically the residents, the stable, and then the riding and training area. The property is five acres. So the goal of the application is to create a, the ability to board horses and the ability to offer riding lessons, and those are both for fee. So it takes it from a personal use to a commercial use. The land has a rural estate and agricultural zoning and land use, so this type of use is consistent with both the land use and zoning. The application seeks to have their hours of operation from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. They're also seeking to allow small special events like a birthday party. The application seeks to allow a maximum of 20 horses. That would include future expansion. The existing facility has 12 stables. At the planning board, they indicated they also had one horse that was not kept in the stable. It was a, I believe it was a wild horse that was rescued, so that, that horse stays on the property. The land development code doesn't have a horse per acre ratio. A key question through the planning board was, what's the appropriate number of horses for this property? So either for personal use or for the special exception, I can't give you your allowed X number of horses per acre. The conditional use criteria does allow the city commission to establish what they believe is appropriate. So through the staff report, through the testimony of the applicant, planning board's recommendation, you can either accept their 20, you can come up with a number, number, or you can deny the riding stable altogether. This is the existing barn for the horses. Unique to this application, which we haven't really seen too many with special exceptions, they have letters of support from the abutting property owners. Within the planning board, they also provided testimonials from their clients, and a letter from the veterinarian going through basically how their horses are operated and treated. The planning board review provided a really good analysis of how they operate the facility. The planning board chair went there the day of the planning board unannounced, and was very pleased with the operation of the facilities. The planning board recommendation was a 7 to 0 vote. Basically, they acknowledged that, you know, the horses per acre weren't just, they weren't just being fed off the grass. Basically, they're supplemental feeding, and there are other factors that allow the horse to be fed properly. Staff is recommending approval, and the planning board also recommends approval, and the applicant is here to address the commission.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen at this time? We'll go to cards, oh.
I, oh, cards first.
Okay, we'll do cards first. Jordan Huntley, followed by, I think it's Joe Huntley. These are the applicants.
Hello, my name is Jordan Humley. I live at 2415 Durant Lane, and I started my business when I was in Tennessee, 2019, moved down to Ormond. I'm originally from Jacksonville, where I trained at a farm, Coriander Farm in Jacksonville, Florida. They have 27 horses on five acres. It is a different area, different facility, but all my knowledge is from that facility. I just talked to my boss about two hours, or my old boss, about two hours, because I used to work there and I rode there and trained there, two hours before coming to this meeting, and kind of talked to her about the points. And she said, the way that I run my facility is the same way that she runs hers. Now, she has 27 horses, and they show. I am wanting to be a show barn, not just a trail facility, not just come rink-a-dink on your horse. I will only do lesson boarding and only do training boarding. I can see someone who has a backyard horse, that they would say, okay, that's too many horses on that much land, on like five acre, that less of land. I understand their, their view of it. That's one horse, and they're only spending the money on their one, and then they're not using it for, like, for money, basically. They're just using it as their pleasure. I supplement with hay. They get brought in at 7:30, they get fed at 7:30, then they get fed again at 3:00. My rotation is 7:30 to 1 for my AM horses. If I had, say, eight more, that would be 1 to 6. My PM horses go out from 7:30, sorry, 6 o'clock PM until 7:30 in the morning. So my night horses get a little bit more turnout. If I was more strict on the turnout at night, I would wake up at 1:00 in the morning and bring them in. That would be every six hours. But my passion behind horses and kids grew from working at Coriander Farm in Jacksonville, Florida, and I understand if I didn't have the knowledge prior, growing up at that farm, then how would I understand how to grow, and how would I understand how to manage a farm with 20 horses on five acres? Now, she had all sand pastures, she didn't have any grass, and I've been to another farm this past weekend that all it had was sand, and this was in Ocala, this is a different area as well. But they supplement with hay, feed, and I have one of my workers that is here, and she has the whole schedule on what they get fed and when they get fed. And behind the children with lessons and birthday parties, that's just an enjoyment that I grew up at Coriander Farm. They did camps, birthday parties. If it wasn't for horses, I, I don't know, I'd probably honestly be on a really bad path. I grew, this is nothing on a sympathy thing, but I grew up with an alcoholic mother, and, you know, I love my mom to death, but it was very hard, and that was my outlet. I was always there. Like, I remember one day, my dad had to call my boss, because I think it was when I started driving, I was 16. I ended up at the farm without telling my dad where I was, and he was freaking out, and Katie said, yes, she's here, and, you know, and then Katie at the time got mad at me for not telling my dad where I was. But that was my outlet, and that's what I want to be, is an outlet for children, and also adults. I mean, adults can come ride and they can come lesson. I'm all for that. But I'm strictly just a, you know, lesson boarding show farm. And for those who drive by the farm, I would like, if I need to be an accountability partner to come show up, that's fine, but I would like them to come to my facility to know what my schedule is, rather than just say, oh, hey, her horses don't go out. And when it is raining, they get groomed, and they also get walked up and down the barn alleyway just to get exercise out, because the property does get wet, and this is our first year here on the property. Kind of sight unseen from when it was wet season last, last year. We had no clue. And so the improvements are going to be made in a timely factor, and I don't, I know, Susan, you made the comment saying, what if six people came to my facility right now? I actually turned down three this past week. One had a gypsy vanner, two were retired horses, and I told them I, I just don't pertain to that. I gave them some other farm names to open business to another person. But if I had six and I said, hey, I'm going to lesson the all six of them, I would say, let me put you on a waiting list so I can get the stalls made in order to provide that. I wouldn't just say, hey, yes, I'll come. And the other note on the horse that does live outside, the agriculture lady does know about that horse, and she actually said that she ran a facility with like 50 horses, and it cannot stay in a stall because it actually kicks the stall, it's not broke yet, and that horse stays outside with another rescue horse that I have. And that rescue horse is from SMP Stables, which is in Putnam County, but used to be in Ormond. So.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
And we'll hear from Joe next, and then go to Wayne Griffin.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the commission for this opportunity to address the special exemption request before you this evening. My name is Joe Huntley. Jordan, my daughter, is the applicant. As I feel that I know Jordan pretty well, I deliberated extensively over what I should relay that would provide assurance that she is worthy of this exception, as there are numerous accounts to choose from. I decided that a recount of two specific events would be best. While such accounts can certainly be categorized as a dad's pride in his daughter, which it certainly is, I do think they are also salient for the topic at hand, as they go to the heart of my daughter's skill, training, and courage as a horse trainer, and also to her compassion for the horses under her care, and also her courage and backbone to take up roots, move 12 hours from Tennessee with no guarantees, and to start a business in Ormond Beach, Florida. In October of 2011, I accompanied Jordan to the US Nationals for Hunter Jumpers held in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. To simply qualify for this competition is quite an accomplishment, as you were competing against riders from against riders from across the country. But what makes it even more impressive is that Jordan qualified while riding a horse that cost me a fraction compared to those ridden by most of the other riders she was contesting with. And while that fraction was a lot of money, was a lot of money for Joe Huntley from Jacksonville, Florida, it was peanuts for most of the other competitors at such an event. It probably comes as no surprise that equine competitions at such a high level are dominated by blue blood families with virtually unlimited resources whose children are riding horses affectionately termed robo-horses valued in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. These horses travel to these competitions with their own veterinarians. If it weren't for the unfortunate downward click of the hoof of Jordan's horse on the third to the last jump, she would have easily won the championship as her time was substantially faster than the other competitors. What does this account demonstrate? It demonstrates that Jordan, even at a young age, possessed the talent, drive, courage, and determination to take a raw, untrained horse that many more seasoned riders at Coriander Farm and Coriander, I could talk about Coriander Farm. It is one of the best farms in the southeast. The owner judges shows worldwide for a Hunter Jumper competition. So Jordan has had extensive phenomenal training. For her to take an untrained horse and to maximize its potential. Second account, shortly before moving to Ormond Beach from east Tennessee, Jordan rescued a horse that had been condemned for slaughter. She trained that horse for less than a month and finished second in a western-style barrel racing competition. Now, while a local event in Seymour, Tennessee is not the U.S. Nationals, Jordan's compassion and willingness to rescue a horse in need and skill in training it was evident. I believe strongly that Ormond Beach as a municipality should encourage and support businesses such as this, a young woman-owned business. This business is hard, it's oftentimes grimy, and it is tough. I can tell you with years of experience watching her, worrying about her, and encouraging her, that she has what it takes to professionally manage a riding stable, the scope of which she is applying for. I also wanted to point out that a number of parents have commented that there exist very few options for beginner rider lessons and for young children in the Ormond Beach area. She has students coming from Ormond Beach and from all over, all other areas of the county. There just simply aren't that many trainers that will take on beginners and will take on young children. Jordan is phenomenal with them. Jordan helps to fill, to fill this void in the community. Lastly, I want to thank all the neighbors, students, and parents of students that have encouraged Jordan and have expressed their support for the special exception. Many of them are here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll move to Wayne Griffin.
Hi, my name's Wayne Griffin. I live at 2499 Durant Lane. I don't have any problem with them getting this conditional use permit. My problem is that at the last, at the planning board, they had 13 horses. They say they have five acres. They got less than two acres usable. You got a big driveway, you got a house, you got a barn, you got a riding arena, you got a big garage. I've been in horses all my life. You cannot keep 20 horses on two acres of land. I have a farm next door, I have 32 acres. By the rule they're looking at 10 horses per acre, I could have 320 horses on my, on my land. I was talking to Rick Webb, my neighbor, he was going to be here tonight and he couldn't make it. We were laughing the other day, said between me and him together, we could have 520 horses on 50 acres. It, it's not good for the horses. There's a state law that says the horses must have wholesome exercise every day. I go by that road every day. If you, you cannot put 10 horses and then little bitty pastures, one's got a big pond, half big as this in that piece, there's no way to put 10 horses in pastures and turn them out eight hours a day. There's no way. And I'm not, I'm not against what she's doing. The city needs to limit the number of horses you can have for usable acres. And then you go back to, she's talking about she picks up slaughter horses. These thin horses she buys are not for slaughter. If you want to save a slaughter horse, you go to the sale and you buy the fat horses. That's the ones going to slaughter. The thin horses they buy, you cannot give them to slaughter. So you buy the thin ones because they're cheap and they don't cost anything. But if you put that many horses on one piece of land, it's absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And next is Darrell Bugnell. Forgive me if I pronounce that incorrectly.
Yes, my name is Darrell Bugnell. I live just east of the farm at 2379 Durant. I'm also a resident here all my life. I think what Jordan is doing is a great thing. I hear her out there with the children all the time, training them and teaching them respect for the horses and how to keep calm and, and keep focused on what they're doing. So I, I do think that she's doing a great thing. Their property seems to be fine for what they're doing. I'm all for it. And that's all, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bugnell. Courtney Tate.
Hi, I'm Courtney. I live at 622 Gibson Street in Daytona Beach. I'm the worker that Jordan was talking about. I got a fee schedule if y'all like it. I mean, that's up to y'all. My job basically consists of taking care of these horses, day in, day out, feed them, water them, take them in, take them out, do the dirty stuff needed, if you get my drift. Every last one of these horses get plenty of exercise, plenty of food, plenty of loving. I catch myself numerous times loving on them every day. So to me personally, I don't, I mean, I don't see an issue with more horses. That's just more loving, more feeding, more caring. You can gift a horse, save a horse, you know, give it a good life, teach it something. I mean, I don't see no issue with it, me personally, anyway. But they all get fed, they all get taken care of. I mean, you can look on the schedule and see, two days from now, that schedule might change. It goes by the horse's needs. But as of right now, that's all the horses that's there and all their needs they need. Two days from now, if vet comes and says, oh, well, this horse needs something, well, we'll change the schedule and get it fixed to where each horse meets what it needs. But that's basically all I got to say.
Thank you, Courtney. And I'll ask the clerk to make the feed schedule part of the record as well. Jake Flippin.
Hey, I'm Jacob Flippin, 622, or not Durant, Gibson Street, Daytona Beach. My girlfriend's the worker, my dad is my cousin. We work every day, we come home. When we get off work, we go to the farm, we fix fence, we drag fields, we do whatever we need to do to improve the property and help out. We usually don't leave till dark. We're outside working, doing whatever we need to do. Every time I've ever been there, they're all seen very happy horses. They're all took very good, took care of very well. And I believe she's doing a great thing for the city around here, teaching kids, working with kids, and I approve of it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jake. And Matthew Flynn.
Hello, my name is Matthew Flynn. I live at 2415 Durant Lane. First off, I do want to say something about our property. We have more than a couple of acres. There are two large pastures that Mr. Griffin was not aware of. You cannot see them from the road. Unlike he says he has 32 acres, he also dug a huge pond that is over five acres with no permits or anything like that.
Matthew, let's focus on why this would be a good thing. Let's not get into the past.
Yes, sir, sorry about that.
No problem.
Anyways, I would like to say thank you for your time and I would like to take this opportunity to tell you, and, and tell you a little bit why we're asking for this exemption. We teach kids that want to learn. In today's world, being as computer-controlled TVs and everything else, that is a rare opportunity to actually say that you can get a child outside with a living animal. Another one of the things is, is that you, you won't find stuff like this in stores. You won't find it anywhere else other than a actual farm. We spend day in and day out, you can look at mine and my wife's hands, they, I mean, her hands are even rougher than mine, taking care of these horses. I also want to put on record that one of the farms that I come from in North Carolina was one of the biggest reigning horses, it's a type of performance horse, in the United States of America. It's called McGee Performance Horses, located in King, North Carolina. They had 48 horses on two and a half acres. Every one of these horses got rode day in, one time a day. The horses that did not get rode got turned out in a little 15-foot sand round pen for one hour. None of these horses seen hay, or none of these horses seen grass, I apologize. They all got hay, fed, and that's it. You do not have to have grass or anything like that if you're substituting food. We do take on a lot of slaughter horses. And yes, they are slaughter horses. A bunch of these horses came from Jason Saxton in Tennessee. It does not matter the weight. If it's going to slaughter, it's going to be sent to slaughter. Either you buy it or it goes on what everybody calls the meat truck. In our eyes, we believe that every living thing deserves the best life that it can, it can be provided. We have went through countless times on spending money where people would have just tossed the horse to the side. We both are experienced with small acreage, but lots of horses. We've both been doing this our whole life. I've been doing it since I was four years old. That's all I got to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Matthew. And Sarah Sabine, and forgive me again if I mispronounce that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking on behalf of Jordan Huntley and Kingsview Stables, both as a client and as someone who has worked in the equestrian industry for 25-plus years. I'd like to start by saying how important it is to have such a great place for kids to go and learn horsemanship right here in Ormond Beach. We feel very lucky not to have to travel to neighboring towns for my daughter to attend riding lessons. It is also my experience, both from running my own stables and working at larger equestrian facilities over the years, that the quality and care of the horses has little to do with the acreage the facility is located on and more to do with the stable management practices of the owners. The old rule of thumb, one horse per acre, is referring to grazing animals and maintaining the pastures at a level to sustain them. This is not the case on many equestrian facilities, especially those within a city limit. The stable management practiced by Kingsview Riding Stables, such as scrubbing out water and feed buckets daily, manure removal, cleaning stalls and paddocks daily, quality hay and grain, daily exercise, excuse me, a frequent warming schedule, as well as a great relationship with her veterinarian, all lend to a happy and healthy environment for her animals and her clients. I believe Jordan has a good, solid plan to grow her business while maintaining a higher than satisfactory level of care for her animals, and I wish her all of her success in doing so in Ormond Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Pam West.
I'm here to speak on behalf of Jordan. My daughter is, has been taking lessons with Jordan, I think, since August. And I, my daughter is a challenge, to say the least, for the family. And since she's been going there, the difference in my child has been, I can't even explain it.
And all she wants to do is be there. And Jordan has taken her under her wing and taught her everything and she goes and spends her entire day there. Every Saturday, she begs to go out there and I hadn't seen her lesson in about a month because she spends all day and it's a really long trip back and forth for me to see her. And I saw her last weekend for the first time in a month and I was absolutely blown away at what my child was able to learn in such a short amount of time from when I saw her last. And she's actually preparing for her first show coming up and I'm just so proud of her and what a difference she's made in my life with my child and especially at home. And whatever she wants, just give it to her because she is so talented and the, the passion she has for what she does and, and including children in this and making a difference in their lives is absolutely non-parallel to anything. It's, it's truly amazing and just, I can't thank her enough for what she's doing for my family and the, and the community.
Thank you, Pam. Heather Rittenner.
Hello, my name is Heather Rittenhour. I live at 107 Oak Lane in Pine Run, but I'm here on behalf of Jordan. My daughter Shelby, she's 11. She's been riding since she was four. I'm a single mom, have a business for myself. Shelby's always been passionate about horses. There was really no local place for me to take her other than out to Samsula. I finally found a local place with Jillian, who was boarding with Wayne, a little bit past Jordan on Durant Lane before Jordan was even there. Never had a good experience with anywhere we went. Jordan moved into town, make a long story short, we found Jordan. It was a blessing. Shelby has never been happier. She's so passionate about horses. Jordan connected with Shelby. She went out of her way for Shelby. She made that outlet for Shelby and taught her more things than I could ever. Being a business owner of myself on a corner with competitive people in my line of business, I've never met somebody that's been so spiteful onto trying to shut down somebody just because of loss of business and maybe because they're jealous or just, just plain out spiteful and hurtful. You know, I had a bad experience there. I just don't, you know, realize why he would just try to hurt innocent people on what she's doing. She's doing good. She's a young business owner with Ormond growing. We need more people like her, more open doors for our kids, more outdoor, just like with COVID and everything. We, we need more idols like Jordan. She's really changed my life, she's really changed my daughter's life. And she's, she's trying. She's got a lot of support. You know, she's, you know, just been, I grew up on that road. I grew up in that neighborhood. I was born and raised here. I grew up on Ward and Trail, a road over. I remember Wayne, back then, he's always kind of been a bully of that neighborhood. You know, I grew up just kind of, you know, scavenging in the woods. I didn't have any friends at that time. That place wasn't built up back then, didn't have any neighbors to play with. So I kind of wandered in the woods and all that kind of stuff. I guess I wandered too far one day, went on his property. He, he pointed a shotgun at me and told me to get off his property and that's kind of where my, you know, his kind of, just a character of how he's been in that neighborhood since day one with people.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Heather, yep, we'll move to William McCarthy.
Hello, my name's William McCarthy and I have a 12-year-old daughter. I, I'm a neighbor of Jordan's. And my daughter's been taking lessons there for, well... And my daughter's been taking lessons there for, well, I guess it's been early summer, and she's learned so much. She's really thriving with horses. Jordan's taken the time to take her to her first horse show and to compete. And she's really been doing a lot better at home and in school because of having this outlet. And I think it's very positive. And I also bought a horse there that's doing very well, very healthy. When I brought it there, it was, it's, it was kind of skinny and everything. It was another, I guess you call them, I don't know, what did you call those horses? I got it from the same place, S&amp;P, S&amp;P Stables. And that was, you know, the horses are in bad shape there. And Jordan's been able to get the top line of the horse looking good, and the ribs are doing good. She's feeding him high-quality feed and hay. So I'm very happy with how my horse down there is doing and how my daughter's doing down there as well. And all I've heard from everyone that's been there, because, you know, I hang out and watch my daughter ride and take her lessons, everyone that goes there is very happy with Jordan and very happy with the positive role model that she's put forth. And I also have a place in Alabama. I have horses up there in northwest Alabama. I've got quarter horses. And I just wanted to say that it is true, you could have 100 acres. And if you don't have good management, your horses could do really bad, poor. So this place here, all the horses are, are clean, the stables are clean, there's a hay room, there's feed, and they've got a good schedule. And that's really important. Horses need a schedule like that, and she's very diligent about that. So I would just like to say, I don't just think it's an okay business. It's the best stables I've ever seen. And my daughter's been taking lessons since she was four years old, and she's learned more since the last six months than she has in her whole life. So she's doing great, and I'm very happy with, that she's our, our neighbor. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for cards. I just need a motion and a second for discussion.
I'll move Ordinance 2021-40.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and Commissioner Selby.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I, I have spoken with a couple of neighbors, including Mr. Griffin and another neighbor. I also visited the farm. Mr. Flynn, I don't know if you remember, but I, yeah, okay, I came out and visited with you, but I feel like I, I didn't get the full benefit of the tour. But at that time, we were talking about some water issues, and it was in the rainy season. So at some future date, I'd like to come out and see the rest of the facility.
Oh, absolutely. Anytime, anytime.
Yeah, it's probably better if you, thank you. That's great. You know, this is my, and when, it's interesting how when you read the write-up, and we have, you know, in our package, we have pages and pages of information. And it gives you a lot of facts about this application and so forth. And the first thing that I was sort of focused in on was the number of horses per acre. Because honestly, I know almost nothing about horses. I haven't ridden a horse in, you know, a very long time. And of course, I've never raised one or owned one or, anyway. But when you, as you learn more about it, and you hear about, you know, stable management practices and supplemental feeding, and you realize that the difference between just turning a horse out and allowing it to eat, only eat the grass, you know, you, it's easy to say, well, one, one horse per acre, you know, obviously a horse is going to kill all the grass in a very short time if you put more than that on there. But, but all that being said, so I mean, I'm definitely supportive of this for two reasons. Number one, animals that, that otherwise probably, you know, would not be alive today are being saved. But more importantly, lives are being changed. And those testimonials were very powerful. And Jordan, I just appreciate what you're doing. Keep up the great work. You know, went to hear about kids who are, the way you can relate to them, the way they are struggling in their lives and they find meaning and purpose. And I guarantee you, I just know that these kids who probably didn't want to do their homework, didn't want to listen to their parents, they learn discipline, they get encouragement, and their lives are being changed because of what you're doing. I, I, I did have a question, which doesn't need to be answered right now, but I think you have a dozen stalls in the, in the barn, and you want the ability to have 20 horses. But I think what I heard was that you don't really intend to add eight more horses till you have stalls for them. Okay. So that would be, that would be a condition of my approval to go to 20, is that there are, in fact, 20 stalls, which, you know, I almost feel kind of silly making that a condition because I know they wouldn't add the horses without the stalls. But just, you know, just to be on the up and up. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. And Stephen, is that included, or do we need to have an amendment?
That would need to be an amendment. Just a number of stalls.
And then with the second or Deputy Mayor Persis, I was going to go to you next. Would you adopt that?
Yes. I would consider, yes, I would. May I, may I comment now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I, I want to, in full disclosure, I want to let everyone know that I did go out to Kingsview Farm, and I've been to Mr. Griffin's farm, and both places are so nice for the horses. I was able to, you know, pet the horses, feed the horses, and really enjoy horses as they're really almost my very favorite animal. I didn't know a whole lot about, about how you feed and how you raise a horse and how you keep them living from day to day until I visited, I visited both places, and I was impressed with both places. At first, I thought, oh, my gosh, there's, there's too many horses. But after I've learned and now talked to people, I realized that really it is okay because they, they aren't grass-fed horses. It's, it's different. And I have to say that the passion from everyone that I talk to is amazing with these horses. But horses cause you to have passion because they're such special animals. And I also love, as an educator, how I know those kids at school who need a little extra, and a horse can make a difference. And someone that cares about a child to teach them about a horse makes a huge difference in someone's life. It can be the difference of being a positive or negative life. It really can. So I just want to say, I love your passion. I hope that you keep that passion always because it's, it is so important. It's a wonderful addition to the city of Ormond Beach for young people and even adults to have a riding stable and to come out and just, just be with nature. And I think that's just a huge, huge thing. I, I really just want to, you know, commend Jordan and Matthew for everything that they're doing. And if you haven't noticed, they have a little baby in their arms over there named Braxton, their little baby, and he's just really cute. And I'm sure he's going to be a good rider as well. But I would, I could go with what Commissioner Selby said. I think that would be, that makes a lot of sense. I would not, I don't know that I'd want to see any more than 20 horses. I don't, maybe you probably don't want any more than 20 horses either. But, but I am definitely in favor of this.
All right. Commissioner Littleton.
I'll speak next. Can I ask Stephen a question?
Sure.
Mr. Spraker, do, does the state of Florida have any horses-per-acre law?
No, we talked to the Department of Agriculture. They have cogas testing, and they have other things they're looking for, but no horse per acre.
Right. So I did a lot of research on this, and the general standard is two horses per acre, right? It fluctuates a little bit depending on where you are in the country, but that's a general consensus. I, I did come across a organization called the Equine Land Conservation Resource. And they said, hey, instead of looking at horses per acre, do a different thing, a little bit more flexible. I said, interesting, or I read it through. And some counties in Maryland, for example, allow 10 horses per acre and the such. And they said it all depended on management. And one of the things was a nutrition management plan. And that was, that was sort of my ace in the hole up here, because I was going to vote no, just a couple hour, you know, a couple hours ago. And that was going to be my here, I got you thing. I'm going to vote no. But the lady worker who turned in this feed sheet, I don't know your name, and I'm sorry for that. And I don't really understand what any of this really is. Yep, but that's.
That's okay, Courtney.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's Courtney Tate.
Yes. Oh, thank you, thank you. That's what I was looking for, and that's what this group that advocates for a different method than horses-per-acre wants to see. And with there being no state law and sort of giving me a nutrition management plan, even though it's not really that, but it's good enough for right here, my mind has been changed. And so I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton.
Commissioner Kent. So Jordan, you had quite a few people say a lot of great, positive things about you. And, you know, you moved down from Tennessee, and you're starting a business in Ormond Beach that will positively affect, I would say, kids, but some parents looked pretty positively affected here tonight as well. And those are all super-positive, great things. And being an educator, I know that certain animals bring out the best in certain people. And, you know, I, I appreciated your, your father's passion about you. And, you know, you, you really didn't have anything prepared, and I liked that. You were just talking off the cuff. To me, those were, those were all positive things. Some, some negative things, you know, mentioned by someone about your neighbor, which I didn't like that. I'm glad that was kind of stopped. But I'm all for this happening. Mr. Spraker, you know, staff has approval for this because my piece, of course, was, well, how many, how many horses? So if they have 20 acres, I'm sorry, if they have five acres, if they have five acres and they want to do 20 horses, well, that's four per acre. And, you know, when, when you Google, how many horses per acre, it doesn't come up as two, it comes up as one. And you heard it earlier, someone say, you know, the old standard, you know, was, was the one. My only hesitation is this. I guess we're setting the bar here. We're gonna, you know, there's, there was no bar. There's none in the state of Florida, but Ormond Beach is saying, this, this is what you can have. And if that's where we go with this, that's okay. And, you know, it's, it sounds like Jordan and her family are extremely knowledgeable with, with horses and love these animals and want to feed them and take care of them and nurture them and have a vet come out and see them. But it kind of in the back of my mind makes me think, you know, what if, what if Jordan changes? Or someone else, you know, comes in and, and, and takes over, and they don't take care of, of the horses the way they should? I guess my question to you, Mr. Spraker, is why the comfort level from staff with 20 horses on five acres?
So city staff has spent an incredible amount of time talking to Department of Agriculture, talking to other jurisdictions, Marion County, Ocala, Blusha County, Flither County. And, and the key thing that we saw is the management of the facility. So the one, one horse per acre is basically if you're letting them graze it, and that's it. That's not what this is. This is a commercial business where they're boarding horses and they're riding lessons. So it, it is different than the traditional one-horse-per-acre. Now, we viewed this, we, our mindset was almost like a variance. So with each variance, each applicant has to prove why this is an acceptable use. So any additional riding stables will have that same burden. This was an extremely high bar to pass based on what we've seen from the neighbors, from the, the clients, and from the veterinarian. We've been out there. We believe that this is a well-run. And if it's not, there are safeguards. There is community service officers who go to the site, there's Blusha County units, and there's the Department of Agriculture, plus the veterinarian. So we feel very comfortable, recommend, and again, this isn't for today. This is a growth of, of future of this business. So they have 12 today. Commissioner Selby's amendment is great to basically match the number of stalls to the number of horses. So again, yes, staff would recommend approval, and Plano would recommend it.
Yeah, no, I, I read that. I just wanted to hear you tell me why staff was so comfortable with allowing 20 horses. Why not, and this isn't a question for you to answer, but why not 30? Why not 40? You know, I mean, if they had 40 stalls, you know, would we, would be, we'd be okay with that because they've got enough food for 40 animals? I'm, I'm going to approve this. Welcome to Ormond Beach, Jordan. And, you know, I, I'm supporting it. And, you know, you've, you've made a positive impact in a short amount of time. I don't, I want you to know by my comment, I don't think you're going to change. I think, listen, anybody that can keep a baby quiet for over two hours, okay? And I've paid attention to that, for, for over two hours, yeah. You know, after the, after you're wildly successful with horses, you might want to write a book on the kids, and, you know, they'll sell a bunch of those. And Commissioner Selby, I am, I am glad you did because if you didn't, I was going to. I'm glad that you amended your motion to make sure that there's a nice stall for every single horse that's on that property.
Thank you, Commissioner Kent. And I'm going to approve this, too. I appreciate, really, the comments from everybody. Mr. Griffin brought up a good point, and it was something that we should, we should consider and think about and know before we make a decision. So I appreciate his input as well. The, the thing that tips it for me is the fact that you do have a management plan, the testimony from the witnesses who did speak that talk about your knowledge and ability in this profession. I'm like Commissioner Selby. I haven't ridden a horse probably in 40 years. I mean, my parents were wonderful enough to allow me to have that experience, but it's just not something that I, that I pursued. And I understand, you know, horse ownership, from what I'm told, is like eating potato chips. You can't have just one. So you're always, you know, looking to have more. My fear is that, based on what I've heard tonight, you are going to do so well, Jordan and Matthew, that you're going to quickly outgrow Ormond Beach. And I, I hate to see that happen because where we're allowing this is kind of the only area in the city that I'm aware of. But I wish you great success from the business end of it. I would like to see you working with SCORE or some group like that as a young businessperson. I think you could do amazing things with what you're doing. That was powerful testimony tonight. That's part of why I get excited about serving in government when I hear people come to the commission and share their heart like that, people's lives being impacted in a positive way. So really, I want to shake Jordan's hand, Matthew's hand. I've got sanitizer just so we do it in a safe, socially-distanced way, but, and I didn't get the benefit of the tours. I feel a little jealous now with Commissioner Selby and Deputy Mayor Persis, but that's just, for whatever reason, that's the way it worked out. So Randy, with the amendment, do you want us to vote on that first and then vote on the interim thing as amended?
It sounds like there's a consensus, and I think the amendment was incorporated in the underlying motion in the second or as well. So you can just vote on it as one total package if you wish.
Perfect. And Stephen, you're okay with that language? Great. Any other comments or discussion that?
Just to clarify, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So the motion is to approve 20 horses, 12 now, eight additional, up to eight additional horses as the stalls are, as the barn has expanded to add the additional eight, eight stalls.
Correct. And then the only, the only other.
Please make sure you pull the proper permits and everything when you're doing your construction.
The only other comment I'd make is if somebody else came with five acres and wanted 20, it would depend. Yeah, this is a unique.
Well, I think, I think the critical thing here is the stable management practices. You know, I think that's the, if there is a precedent, which I don't necessarily believe there is, it's a special exception, it's tied to the fact It's tied to the fact that there's this stable management plan that, you know, makes it palatable.
Yes, sir, that was my point. The special exception process gives us that ability to, kind of a pressure relief valve, if you will, without making a precedent per se. I mean, I understand what Commissioner Kent's saying as well, and his point is good and valid. There may be an expectation based on that, but it would have to also meet all these other criteria as well, so. Anyone else? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to 9A.
Ordinance number 2021-01, an ordinance amending section 2-221 Leisure Services Advisory Board of Article 6 Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Other Agencies of Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordances by replacing a member appointed by the Gymnastics Association with a member appointed by the Commission at Large, providing terms and conditions and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-01, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. We're going to take just a five-minute break so I can shake Jordan's hand and Matthew's hand before they leave.
Jordan, hold on. Matthew and Jordan, hold on.
We'll wait for Commissioner Kent to come back.
And Dad. And Braxton. Move for approval.
This is 9A.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we start our reports, suggestions, and requests tonight with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few updates for you. Currently, the McDonald House is set to kick off its reciting of that facility. They will be beginning with the east wall? East wall?
That was right, yeah.
I think correct. So we'll be getting the east wall of the McDonald House. We have contacted Mr. Heaster, who's building neighbors, the McDonald House, to advise him that we will be kicking off construction. He was grateful to hear that. We will also be, there has to be a dumpster to take some of that old stuff off, and that will be in that parking lot. So it'll be limited parking there, and we've communicated that to the tennis center and the McDonald House. And we've also communicated with the Historical Society. So everybody's on the same page with that. But we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Just as a note, redistricting, you know, that happens every 10 years with the census. The city charter requires that the commission to review those boundaries of the city commission zones every 10 years following the certification of the United States Census. Once a census information is received, the city's GIS department, Graphic Information Systems, and planning staff will provide some options to the commission regarding redistricting. We don't know quite yet when we'll get that census data from the feds. It's probably sometime late spring, early summer. But you all have reviewed that yourselves and, and worked that through, I think a workshop meeting is what we do, and then we have to bring that back. So I just wanted to kind of update you on that. So if you're thinking about it. As you know, today at the county council, they talked about the loop, as you heard here today. And I'm just circling back with the commission. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the idea of providing a letter of support. If that's something you want staff to bring back for the next meeting?
I did, and I guess we could, if you want us to talk about it real quickly, I thought Commissioner Kent worded it just about perfectly. And then if the rest of the commission has a position on either of the other-
My position is that I don't know if this piece of land should be bought or not. And I don't think the county knows, and I don't really think the county council knows either, until they reestablish the Volusia Forever Committee and they allow the committee to evaluate this parcel, along with other parcels that are, that have, that have been in the mix before. So what I would say is that I support, I would encourage the county to, to get that. And it was on their agenda for today. That was one of, I think it was the next item actually on their agenda, to get the Volusia Forever Committee and the new rules. That was a big part of the campaign that, that got the 75% vote to approve the Volusia Forever and Echo. They're going to have full transparency. They weren't going to do some, you know, two minutes before midnight backdoor deals. And so I think we should, we should encourage them to do that. And my sense is that Mr. Mitchenberg, as long as he knows that they're, you know, that they're moving forward on this, not necessarily committed to doing it, but that they're moving forward through that appropriate process. And if that process then recommends that they buy that land, well, more power to them. So it's about process for me, not the content, you know?
Gotcha.
I would just say, I, I'm, as a Volusia County resident, I'm hesitant of them spending 1.3 some odd million dollars to buy land if we're not going to lower the density. I don't really see a purpose in that. So if we want to send a letter of, you know, approving the process, but more deeper than that, I'm hesitant to be supportive of.
And Deputy Mayor Persis?
No, I'm, I'm in favor if the county wants to purchase that land. I'm, I'm all behind it, using whatever funds they can. I don't, I would not want to use Volusia County taxpayers' money to do so. But I, I would like to see that be a buffer and, and not be built on personally. That would be my preference in a perfect world.
The way that property lines up with the telephone poles there, it almost is, would be perfect just to keep that as a, be a huge buffer. But to keep it as, as the buffer. And I know, you know, people, people who are here tonight were disappointed in me that I didn't approve a letter of support for today. But I was worried, you know, what we all thought. And I can't get ahead of the commission and just say, yes, let's do it. So once again, you know, government has these processes that we have to go through to figure out where we are all at. So kind of what I'm hearing tonight is three of us, including me, and maybe Commissioner Selby as well, in favor of writing a letter, supporting the county following its newly approved processes to review that property and maybe suggesting that it would be a great benefit to the Loop if, if it was approved. I mean, that's kind of a letter that needs to be crafted. Maybe you could bring us a couple of options for the next meeting or something like that. And we might even get Commissioner Littleton to come on board if we, if we word it well enough. But, so yeah, my understanding was there was a lot of conversation at the county council meeting exactly about those type of things. Does that seem like a fair way to approach it if you brought us a couple different options?
And then, and then just to remind everyone, there, there are thousands and thousands of signatures on petitions that people would really love to see that happen. I mean, just, we just can't forget that because there's people out there that, you know, they're so passionate, so, so passionate about it. So I just want to remind everyone, they're, they're there.
Yeah, I mean, that's true, but I think a lot, I think most people think this land directly fronts on, on the road, and it doesn't. I mean, there's a 175-foot buffer. It's 36 acres, but roughly 12 of the acres are the buffer. It can't be built on anyway. The, the developer has agreed even to make it a conservation easement, which is frankly totally unnecessary because it doesn't need to be a conservation easement. It is a conservation easement, not officially, but it, it can't be built on. So it, it will stay natural vegetation. So I think most people just don't realize that. And I know there's 63,000 people. I, I wanted to sign that petition. I wanted to sign it, but I read it, and I said, I can't sign it. It's not, it's not completely accurate. You know, I can't, because I know that it's not completely accurate, and a lot of those people don't even live here. Now, they still, they still could be passionate about it, you know? But anyway, I'm just, I think the concerns that I have and that any of us have, if the, if the county council puts, if they reestablish the committee, the, the, and if they put this parcel through that process, through that evaluation process, any concerns that we might have will be brought to light, and, and then it will be graded or evaluated as any other parcel would be. And then if it rises to the point where, you know, the money is available to do it, then they'll, they'll recommend it to the county council, and they'll do it. And that's what I, I just think, you know, I'm not against it, I'm not for it. I, I just want it to be evaluated the same way that any other parcel would be. And not, you know, not just make a snap decision because a bunch of emotion has been ginned up.
And the, well, one of the issues I have with change.org is they allow you apparently, which I didn't know before this whole thing, but they allow you to change the petition. So that petition has been changed at least once after quite a few signatures were obtained and then substantially changed from what it was originally. The other issue I just heard tonight was they've, somebody has raised $12,000, and change.org doesn't let that go to the scenic Loop and Trail, which is who should have that money to continue their work preserving the Loop? So frustration, I guess, is, is my point by, by bringing those up. But still, I think we have a good, and we've got time now, not a huge amount, but if it's on the next agenda or so, I think we'll be in good shape. And I think you've heard enough to draft something, and we'll go from, go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one last Capitol project update. The, the Carriage House at the Casements is almost completed, so we're happy to say that that's in its final, final stages. I don't have any other comments tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for the city manager? Deputy Mayor Persis?
I forgot to ask you when we were talking, the church, what's going on with the church?
I have had some discussions with someone that has an interest in the church. So I would not want to disclose that publicly at this time.
Okay.
Anyone else? Assistant City Manager Claire Whitney. Thank you, Joyce. Claire Whitley. Thank you, Claire. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And then tonight, we start with Commissioner Kent.
We never discussed as a commission when the school board made a decision to go with Ortona Elementary School instead of Osceola Elementary School for the new rebuild. And that's a huge blow to Ormond Beach. To take away an incredible elementary school in our community and to have our residents, and really the county's residents that live all the way up by Kingston Shores, to have to commute all the way to Ortona Elementary has never sat well with me. And I believe the school board had a workshop to talk about the new rebuild that's going to happen. And there were some questions raised at that workshop about, well, and there was a new school board member that was just seated. And I had a conversation with her about a month ago and said, I think you should get a bite at this apple. This is a decision that will affect lives for at least 50 years. And a brand-new school at Osceola will help revitalize our beachside. It will bring more families to purchase homes in that area. Not to mention, we've had a longstanding agreement with the school district for recreation purposes. And on the beach side, besides Andrew Romano Beachfront Park, it's going to be a huge loss if, if Osceola doesn't continue. So I would like for the commission, because I think time is of the essence, to instruct our city manager, because we, we said to move the utilities, it was like between two, if my memory is right, between $250,000 and $300,000, and the city was going to pick up that tab. Thank you very much, city of Ormond Beach. And I don't know if that was conveyed, it may have been, I don't know, to all of the board members. But I think it's important for them to know. And I think if Ormond Beach has an opportunity to keep Osceola Elementary, then we should keep Osceola Elementary. It's, it's, in my opinion, not just because I went there, or my five brothers and sisters, or my mother was the first graduating class out of there. It is, it makes more sense from a traffic standpoint. It makes more sense, it's a larger piece of property. You know, I just feel like all people have, really have to do is drive around Osceola Elementary and then go drive around Ortona and look at how the traffic will stack up. Look at the design that they've come up with. I, I, I just think that, you know, it may be a long shot, but maybe we should direct our city manager to see, does the school board need to have a joint workshop with the city commission? I know we already sent a letter. Does it need to be resent because there's a new school board member on there? So I have one more comment after this, but I wanted to get this out first to see if anybody else remotely felt like I do that Osceola Elementary should be the new beachside school. You take that school away, and we don't have a school on our beachside. Daytona Beach claims Seabreeze High School. We don't get to claim Seabreeze High School. In fact, we're one of the only cities that doesn't have a high school. Okay? Some have two. But we're one of the only ones that doesn't have one. And so, yeah, I just wanted to see if anybody else wanted to chime in and, and see what we could do to try to keep Osceola Elementary as the replacement school.
I think, yeah, the best way to probably approach it would be to ask the city manager to set a discussion item and do some research and bring maybe those options back to us. I mean, $250,000 is a lot of money, but maybe there's more we can do. I don't know. But Deputy Mayor Persis?
That was actually what, what Commissioner Kent is saying is, is exactly right. And when this first came up to the school board, it was, it was really earmarked maybe really to come to Ormond. And then I think Sarah Lee Morrissey, who is no longer with the school board, had a lot to do with it in trying to, you know, kind of, I don't know, she was kind of moving toward the Ortona site in Daytona. And I think she swayed some other people a little bit. And, and then it just kind of, you know, got away from us, from us in Ormond. And I am definitely in favor of anything we can do to get it back here for sure.
And, you know, I'll just, I'll just also say, I, I'm okay with the idea of having it come back as a discussion item, but I think time is of the essence. I, I heard that, I heard that from a, from a constituent that has kids at Osceola, that they received a Connect Ed message the other day, automated phone call message, that said, we just want to let parents know, and I'm paraphrasing, that the portables will be delivered in the very near future at Osceola to take all of the kids from Ortona and have them in the portable city while their school's being rebuilt. So I don't know if we have the luxury of waiting for another agenda to have that. I appreciate hearing Commissioner Persis put, put her support behind it as well. I just would hate for us, ultimately, it's not our decision, okay? We know that. But I would, as the guy that represents that zone, and for this city to miss out on something that is going to affect us for over 50 years, like, I'm not going down unless I'm kicking and screaming on this one. So.
Is there, is there any way you could make a phone call to the school board and find out where they are and, and let them know we really would like to revisit it and, and like to stop it right now because we'd like to revisit it?
Certainly I'll do that, but I think probably what would be most effective is to appear before them at their next meeting reiterating the city's commitment to assisting Osceola with that 250 for the stormwater. Or if there's other areas that they need assistance, that they could reach out to us and we could explore that. So I don't know what-
Do you know when their next meeting is?
I don't know also. Do you know?
I'm thinking not this coming Tuesday, but the next Tuesday, whatever that date is. I don't have my calendar in front of me. Oh, well, here's- Yeah. I had one on the 12th, was the last one.
So that'd be the 26th.
Is next week.
Yes, so it is next week. Yes, so it is next week, yeah.
So, I mean, I could sign up to speak during their public comment. I could circulate, oh, no, Randy, I could circulate the same letter I sent before to the commission.
If that's the best approach.
And could you, could you also talk to each school board member prior to that?
I would be happy to. And I think, just so you know, I think it has, a city manager can talk to a school board member, but it has much more impact coming from commissioners to school board members, you know? We have talked previously to the new gentleman that took over Sarah Lee's position, but I just don't think there was a lot of, I think that train was already down that track, as far as he's concerned. So I'm happy to appear. I'm happy to take that same letter that we took to them, and I'm happy to call them all individually, but I think it's also important that the commission reach out, and I can resend the letter.
And I'm happy to do those things as well. Just let me know. I mean, we need to know, and then we need to have a strategy. Just jumping into it head-on, full force, may be the absolute worst approach, you know? Sometimes these things take a little finesse. And so finding that out and then developing that strategy as we discuss it and agree upon it, rushing into it goes completely against transparency and all the things that we're looking for. You lose, when you have that deadline, just like the county council did today, you lose the transparency, you encourage people to think there's backroom deals going on, there's time limits, and it has to be done by this time. And so that's the part I want to avoid, and I want to have the best strategy going forward, because I think Commissioner Kent's right on, that we need that school in Ormond Beach. That's why we put such a huge push in the first place. And so if there's a way to save it from where it's headed, that'd be fantastic. It's just, let's do it the right way, is all I'm asking for, not rush into something and end up working against ourselves.
I'll go to the school board meeting, too.
So I'm hearing different things from different people, so perhaps, Mayor, you can figure out what this group would like to do.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, I definitely support the concept of, you know, trying to keep the school, the elementary school in Ormond Beach. And I just also wanted to say that, as I read the write-up on it, they're proposing to model it after the Autobahn School in Orlando. And interestingly enough, my granddaughter, who lives in Orlando, attends that school. And it is, I haven't seen it yet, but it is really, it's unbelievable. I mean, it's just amazing how cool it is. And she loves going there. She's a kindergartner. And she was visiting Monday, yesterday, and her mom said, hey, we got to get home. She's got a lot of homework. I asked my wife, I said, isn't Harper in kindergarten? Anyway, you know, she was excited about getting her homework done. So, so, yeah, I support it. And, you know, maybe with a couple of phone calls, we actually have a member of this commission who might be able to give us some guidance tonight after she goes home and talks to her school board member.
Definitely, I can do that.
Husband.
And I, too, would be happy to go to a school board meeting and, as the Zone 2 representative, where the school would go and share the reasons behind why this makes more sense. Two more items. Ms. Shanahan, I want to get with you in chat. I'll let the commission know now. Advent Health pulled out of Ormond Beachside with their hospital several years ago, and they have done zero to bring any type of medical facility back to the beachside. Maybe we need to reach out and start talking to Halifax Hospital. And maybe, not maybe, this commission needs to come up with a game plan and maybe offer some incentives. Our residents deserve emergency services on the peninsula barrier island beachside of Ormond Beach. And we should do everything in our power to help facilitate that. And if Advent Health does not want to participate, then we should be reaching out to others that may want to participate, and see what we can do.
We have had discussions with Halifax Health over the last couple of years as well.
How have those gone? Obviously not well, because there's nothing there? Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Right.
Well, maybe the commission needs to come up with a game plan and talk about some incentives that the city of Ormond Beach could do to help assist and get a medical facility, most preferably an emergency room-type facility on our barrier island. Again, I'm worried about our residents over there, Ormond Beach residents, both Zone 2 and Zone 1. But listen, just talk about human beings for a moment. If you live up in Kingston Shores, you've got a real hike to get to any medical facility in Volusia or Flagler County. And my last piece for tonight is, I have been receiving several complaints about the YMCA Dog Park and the condition of the park, and the holes that aren't filled in, and the parts of the park where they're, they've got tape on it that says, you know, temporarily closed, and the water section not working. And we spent a ton of money on that dog park, and I just think we need to have a better plan, because it represents Ormond Beach. It truly is a representation of us, and that's not how we operate. Our stuff is spick and span, sharp, tight, on point, whatever you want to say. It just is. Look at our splash pad at South Ormond Neighborhood Center. Look at Andy Romano Park. Look at the Boundless Playground. Anything we touch, we do it correctly. And the YMCA is not making us look good. And I just think maybe, maybe our city attorney, we need to, we need to get you involved, and there need to be some healthy conversations with the YMCA about expectations. This money was given for this purpose, and we are at this expectation level. In fact, it was in black and white, written in a contract, and we expect you to follow it. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. I know it's getting late. I just wanted to let everyone know I had the opportunity to go to a tree planting ceremony at Ormond Beach Elementary School last Friday. They planted a beautiful little tree in front. It was a lot of fun. There was a second-grade class that was out there, and we talked about the importance of trees. Staff did a fabulous job of organizing it, so I just wanted everyone to know that. And I also just want to thank Stephen for coming out with me to Jordan's Lane to visit the riding stables. It was nice to have a city person there, you know, just supporting me and just, you know, giving your knowledge. So thank you for spending your vacation weekend time over there. I appreciate it. And I hope everybody has a great weekend. Thank you.
Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank staff for their hard work and dedication, and actually this commission for meeting its constituents on the A1A median project, and staff specifically has been working a lot on Nova Road and the median project that could be coming there. And this is, this is the way government's supposed to work. I mean, our constituents have come to us with issues. We've worked, along with our local municipalities and other experts, to try to work out something that's going to be beneficial to as many people as possible. And a lot of stuff happens behind the scenes, and I really think that these median projects, with the new investments, Publix on Nova and Restaurant Row, that's sort of happening on A1A, we can really make an impact and really shine up those areas for the better and for, you know, generations to come. So thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items. First, Commissioner Kent, relative to the beachside urgent care medical facility. I don't have personal knowledge, but I read in the paper what Daytona Beach Shores did, and I think they pretty much provided the space at almost, at like, no rent, very, very nominal rent, a couple of thousand square feet, I think it is, to Halifax Hospital for that. So I don't know if that's the bar. I don't know if it, I don't know that it has to be free, but that certainly was a big incentive. And now Halifax, my understanding is they're spending quite a bit of money to improve this space, to build it out to their specifications, but there's, you know, little or no ongoing overhead associated with that. And then the other comment I just want to make was that because Commissioner Persis was gracious enough to allow me to take over her position on the Ormond Main Street Board, we had our, I had my first board meeting with them last night. It was virtual. And I'm actually happy to report that their revenue for the year is only down about $15,000, even though their events are, you know, were dramatically impacted. And they've challenged the board to figure out a way, they're going to create a special committee to, to figure out alternative ways to raise money to beef up the budget. They had their Sunday afternoon evening was their first bash on the Boulevard, and it was successful. It, you know, it had its challenges, but it actually made money. It didn't cost them any money to do it. It made money, and it got favorable reviews. And they have two events coming up, assuming that they can get permits. I'm looking at the permit queen. Granada Grand, which is tentatively set for Saturday, February 6th. That's the event that they typically do in the parking lot.
It's the outside event.
Yeah, it's outdoors in the parking lot behind City Hall here. And Taste of Ormond, which is tentatively scheduled for Sunday, March 7th. But there was some, quite a bit of discussion about that, and it's, it's not inconceivable that that will be delayed. They're very concerned about what the response will be in March, early March, for that type of event. Even though it's outdoors, it's still pretty heavily attended, so they're.
I think they're still trying to work out the food issue about how do you?
Yeah, the rest.
Do shared food?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, they got the, each of the restaurants serving the food. So anyway, so just to make you aware, those are the tentative dates for those two events, February 6th and March 7th. But stay tuned, don't, they might change. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. The hospital issue, I know they have the density in the shores with an older population living in the high-rises to support that, so that's why they're, why they're going there. I think it's been over a year since we met with Halifax, and that was promising. It was interesting, exciting to see what they were thinking about and how they were thinking. But then COVID happened, and their focus has shifted. Advent, we met with, was it before Christmas?
Somewhere.
Pretty recent. And they're still committed, is my understanding, but with the pandemic still raging on, the number's worse now than when we were completely locked down for months, if you can fathom that. They just aren't ready to resume normal operations. But I think for them, listening to Dr. Snaith tonight, they're going to recover pretty quickly, and hopefully we'll get back on track. But, so I think things may be coming. I appreciated hearing that they were still committed. It's just going to possibly take a little bit, a little bit more patience and a little bit more time, but always happy to talk to either one, Halifax or Advent, and.
And Brian and I will put our heads together and see what we can come up with.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.